Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the June 10th, 2019 Town Council meeting. I'm Town Council Chairman Ed Dombrowski. Item one on the agenda is the call to order. I see that all seven Town Councilors are here this evening along with Mr. Mayo, Mr. Mullen, and Clerk Dalton. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we stand up for that, I wanted to introduce something that I'd like to do differently this year with respect to the Pledge of Allegiance, and that is to have the pledge led by different members of our community. The first such member will be Staff Sergeant David Mangin. He is our new Wakefield Veterans Services Officer. He is a United States Air Force Veteran who served from 1968 to 1972 and was a crew chief of an F-105 Thunder Chief during the Vietnam War. David was born in Cambridge, Massachusetts. He retired from Boston College as the catering operations manager. He attended the New England Culinary Institute, Newberry College in Boston, and the University of Maryland. We are proud that David now resides in Wakefield with his wife Christine and his two daughters and three grandchildren. David's hobbies include photography, repair, and rebuilding old Jaguar automobiles as well as model railroading. It's my distinct honor to introduce Staff Sergeant David Mangin to please come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Staff Sergeant, and I should say to the community that any opportunity we have to invite someone here to lead us in the pledge, I welcome. And so if you have someone you'd like to nominate, or if you yourself would be interested, please do reach out to either me or someone else on the Town Council and let us know. Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be item number four, that's the approval of the minutes from our May 30th, 2019 meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 30th, 2019.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Seeing none, all Councilors in favor of approval of the minutes for May 30th, 2019?
Aye.
Seeing the vote is unanimous, 7-0. Motion carries. Item number five is public participation. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that's signed in for public participation this evening?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, it's Chairman's comments. There are two items that I'd like to address tonight. Envision Wakefield Downtown Revitalization and Parking Enforcement. I just want to touch on both of those briefly. The Envision Program, as many of you know, is a project that has been ongoing for several months, focused on revitalizing downtown, and there has been a great effort put into date and there will be going forward. At town meeting this past spring, we passed additional funding to bring us into Phase Two of that project. That funding is technically released as of July 1. In the interest of keeping this project moving forward and continuing to have the community dialogue that's so important to a project, especially at this magnitude, we had this past Friday, a focus group session involving a number of stakeholders from various interests within the community who came together and offered their feedback and comments. We also have on June 18th at 7:00 PM at the Americal Civic Center, our next public forum for the community to come out and learn more about the project and offer comments and insights. I do think that one thing that's important to stress, and I know that there's been a good amount of community dialogue on this, is the issue of parking. Parking is one of the fundamental considerations of the Envision Wakefield Project. I can say that everyone involved with the project, from the beginning of the project, has prioritized parking as one of the most important considerations we have in looking at any sort of revitalization efforts. I know that there has been a lot of discussion about what that will mean in terms of parking, potential parking reconfiguration. I remind everyone that the Envision Wakefield Project in its current stage continues to be a framework. It is a skeleton, and we're still working through to determine what opportunities we have to make sure that we do our best to increase parking and the quality of parking that is available. I do also want to dispel a couple misconceptions relative to this project. One of them, the most obvious one being that parking is not being considered. It most certainly is being considered, and again, it is a primary driver of our decision-making throughout this process, and the community has made that clear, and all those involved with the project have similarly held that in high regard. Also, when you hear talk of the idea of parallel parking, this is not parallel parking like you would envision in, say, downtown Boston, or maybe on Beacon Hill, tight spots that one has to back into. We have defined parallel parking throughout our community already. We have it on Main Street, we have it on Albion Street, we have it on a host of other streets as well. You will see that going forward in the weeks to come, as we focus on parking enforcement, we'll continue to line additional areas, additional streets, to better define parking spaces. Any of these parking spaces are more than ample to accommodate any size vehicle comfortably. It's not, these are not tight squeezes, these are not bumper-to-bumper hits, these are quite expansive spaces. And so I think it's important for the community to not lose perspective on this and recognize that what we're talking about is not necessarily introducing a new concept, but instead expanding a concept that we've all come to know for the past several decades here within the town. So I think that's important to point out. There have also, relative to that, been a lot of questions about parking enforcement and how we'll go forward in that regard, and parking enforcement will be in effect as of July 1. The Council has approved that, and going forward, we will have two parking attendants who will go through to make sure that we have parking that is in compliance with the posted time limitations. As has been mentioned before, approximately 35, 36% of parking spaces now are occupied for more than four hours in posted limits of just one hour. The Council as a body has approved two-hour limits for parking now, expanding from one hour to two, but with, and we've also approved opportunities for four-hour parking, and we'll hear more tonight from Chief Scory about additional opportunities that Traffic Advisory Committee is seeking relative to expanding parking. We are, and those limits, we are very mindful of the balance between parking for a number of the merchants and their employees, as well as the customers that will be coming into the community, and downtown specifically. And we have tried to strike the careful balance of doing that. Chief Scory will speak in further detail about that, but please know that with respect to parking, we take it seriously. We understand that there are different needs for different folks, and we've done our best to make sure that even in this enforcement mechanism, we have addressed the concerns that have been raised. Please also keep in mind that going forward, parking is nimble, and we are able to change signage as the demand might dictate going forward to make sure that we strike the right balance. We think we're pretty close to there, but of course there will be modifications going forward with respect to that. I do also want to point out one piece, and I know Chief Scory will speak in further detail in a bit about this. The parking lot that is currently next to Onlet Headquarters, we have a really unique opportunity. I was speaking just this afternoon with Joe from our GPW Department, and they are able to recycle a lot of asphalt that is going to be pulled up as we do some paving around town. So in about a week's time or so, that paving will begin. We will take that in what is called millings. We'll take about an inch of that off the top and we'll recycle it, and end up being able to put it down into a semi-permanent parking lot that will be created next to Onlet Headquarters. The reason it's semi-permanent is because of the rail trail. We will end up having a more permanent solution there in the coming years, but in the meantime, it allows a good spot for merchants and for our parking. And the last piece on parking and the Envision Downtown is bikes. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about bike lanes, certainly. Bike lanes are something that are nearly a requirement in almost any new mass DOT project. You'll see, with limited exception, you'll see the expectation there that there'd be bike lanes as a part of multi-modal transportation. We are still exploring every option with that, and if there are opportunities to readdress any routing or circulation of bike lanes, of course, that's part of the process that we're doing. We hear, you know, we hear the inquiries and we're doing our best to address them. Ultimately, it'll be dictated by the Mass Department of Transportation, but we are aware and we're tuned into those concerns. I just want to end with identifying and showing to the Council for the first time and the community, one of a series of Envision Wakefield Downtown Revitalization video vignettes. And this video provides information about various sections of the Envision Downtown Project. This will be online and available to anyone, it'll be promoted through social media, it will also be available on our website, along with several others. This is just one representation of a series of videos that have been created, and I do want to acknowledge our Communications Manager, Jen McDonald, who did an absolutely phenomenal job in creating these packages. These were created by us, for us, and this video that we're going to be seeing that runs about four minutes is an overview of the Middle Main Project, and this is the project that seems to have gotten the most attention. It, in essence, stretches from Water Street down until about the Rockery or thereabouts, and so with that, I'll turn it over to WCAT to run this.
The town of Wakefield is excited to share the conceptual streetscape and roadway vision for the heart of our downtown. Working closely with stakeholders, businesses, and residents at a series of community forums, conceptual plans have been created for South Main, Middle Main, North Main, Albion, and Water Streets. These designs are a framework, the bones of the project. As the design process continues, elements like sidewalk and roadway materials, types and styles of lighting, placement of bus stops, and other details will be determined. You are currently looking at Middle Main Street. Just to orient you, on the right side of your screen is the intersection of Main and Water. This is the Smith Street/Water Street parking lot. Continuing northbound, you'll see the Hyker statue and Rockery across from Crescent Street, and further north beyond this graphic, you'll be at the lake. Part of the design process is planning for the future of our downtown and conceptualizing how it could be used. As you may know, the Wakefield-Linfield rail trail, which is a separate project, will begin just south of here across from the Galvin School. It will cross Water Street at its intersection with Vernon. This will bring many modes of transportation to the area, and this project looks to accommodate all of them safely. On this concept for Middle Main, the lime-green strips indicate where separated bike lanes could be located. They'd be at the level of the sidewalk, away from the roadway and parking stall, and also adequately separated from the sidewalk itself. Here are examples of how other communities incorporated this type of lane. As the road tightens here, the current angled parking would need to be replaced with parallel spaces. Understanding the importance of parking on Main Street, we could make up for lost spaces on Center Street and Princess Street. By widening each road slightly and making them one-way from Main to Union, it would create a loop. This would allow parking spaces to be created on each side of both roads. This adjustment would not only make up for spaces on Main Street, but may result in a net gain of two to eleven spaces over what is present today, just in this specific area. The directions shown here are just concepts. Again, these are fluid, and the design is a dynamic process. The exact parking count would be determined when the plans are further along in design development. You'll notice that angled parking is maintained elsewhere on Main Street, and keep in mind that angled parking could be added where it does not exist today further north. You'll hear more about that in the North Main video. This project also envisions a better experience for our pedestrians and ensuring accessibility for all. You'll notice red dotted lines throughout the design. These show where today's curb lines are. Many residents shared their opinion that crossing Main Street was very difficult, and not all crosswalks were accessible to individuals with disabilities. From 2014 to 2016, 62 crashes occurred along Main Street between Crescent and Water. Ten of those crashes involved vehicles backing out of angled parking spots, and seven were pedestrian-related crashes. The component of this project is safety for all modes of traffic, including pedestrians, and bringing the area up to standards set forth by the Americans with Disabilities Act. This plan shows added bumpouts at each end of the crossings. This would reduce the crossing distance, making it shorter and safer. The bumpouts would also place pedestrians in front of the parking stalls, making people more visible to drivers. You'll also notice that added medians are suggested to bring the beauty of North Main down to the center. Reconfigured sidewalks not only bring a greater pedestrian experience, they could also be spaces for outdoor dining, shopping, or events as we look to the future. Those details and material selections would be looked at closer in the next phase of design. Trees are shown as a placeholder here. This is an example of a before and after, showing how one town opted to utilize a similarly gained space. Engineers would work to retain as many mature trees as possible, and new trees and plantings could be introduced. There would also be the opportunity to install pedestrian-scale lighting and wayfinding signs. Again, while the framework is outlined in these plans, the detail will be determined later. Let's look at a cross-section view of the area highlighted in red. You'll see the sidewalks and sidewalk-level bike lanes, the bumpouts, the angled parking featured in this area, travel lanes, and the tightened sidewalk. We'll discuss the Water Street parking lot in our South Main segment and changes to Common Street in the North Main segment.
And again, this is just one of a series of videos that are available online and will be promoted across social media as well, so everyone can have additional information about the project. The key to this is to make sure that we communicate out as much as we can. I know that when I speak with Staff Sergeant Mangin just a little while ago, he mentioned, his quote was, "That communication is the currency of a successful operation." And I think that's precisely what we're looking to do here, so I thank you Staff Sergeant for those words of wisdom, and that's something that will certainly be ongoing going forward. All right, moving on to item number seven, this is constituent issues, just to remind everyone, especially those at home. Councilors now have the opportunity to briefly...
Are we not going to have any discussion? Sorry. Are we not having discussion about anything that you just presented?
I was not intending discussion.
Okay.
No, but we can discuss it in the context of Chief Scory, but if there's something you'd want to say, by all means, of course.
We can wait.
Sure?
You presented, and I think we all have feedback, and I actually wanted to correct you because the videos, Counselor DeNaco, and I actually saw the video on Friday. It was shown to the focus group on Friday, so members of public have seen it, and I just didn't know. But this is the first time most of the Councilors have seen it, so I don't know if there was going to be any discussion about it.
Sure.
But we can wait.
I welcome discussion on it. Why don't we do that? To clarify, this video incorporated comments from the focus group on Friday, so this video actually wasn't what was shown on Friday. What was shown on Friday was a different video. This is a reflection of the feedback that we received on Friday, because again, this is a dynamic process. We're always wanting to make sure that we incorporate any feedback, so there was some feedback that we did incorporate into this video that is now, as I said, being released to the public generally. And you are correct, there was a small group of people at a focus group that saw these videos, and in the way that focus groups work, a small group offering feedback, and based upon that feedback, revisions were made to these videos to make sure we captured all the thoughts of those constituents. That said, if there are further comments, let's open it up. Does anyone have any further comments?
I'm just going to ask one real quick question, Mr. Chairman. Did you state that these are already on the town's website as changes the videos? The videos aren't on there yet. They won't be on until after the 18th, correct?
No, the videos are going on, I don't know whether they're on, at this moment, they're in, they'll be on by morning, basically.
The new ones that we just saw at the forum?
That's correct. Yes.
We may, we may show them at the forum first. We'll have to discuss, though, that was something that was discussed the other day.
Okay.
So I'm sorry to jump in, but I didn't want there to be misinformation.
Counselor DeNaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate, I think, the comment, the opportunity to comment. You know, I think one of the things in keeping with the comment around, you know, communication is the currency of leadership, I think one of the things that would be helpful maybe is if we could lay out sort of a plan for the next several months around sort of the opportunities for the public to engage in this process. It's great that there's a meeting coming up on the 18th, but I think so that people have a chance to understand exactly what's kind of coming up, when they have the opportunity to give feedback. I think it would be helpful if we can have the committee that's working on this put together sort of a calendar of when we expect to have public meetings, when people have the opportunity to give feedback, so that we do make sure that we get everyone involved who has an interest in doing so.
Certainly, yes. I know that we have a very robust focus group of, I think, every stakeholder you could envision, as well as the community forums, but absolutely. And this is a process that will continue to have considerable public engagement, and as it lays out in the video, there are a lot of opportunities going forward for decisions to be made. This, the June 18th meeting is meant to be the latest to kind of catch people up, to kind of get information from people. I do expect that in speaking with VHB over the, over July and August, there's probably not likely to be as much engagement by virtue of the fact that a lot of people are vacationing, and also based on their timeline with Mass DOT. And then going into the fall, I expect that to ramp up again. That's not to say information will be pushed out, I just think the public forums will probably...
Oh, and that's terrific. My only point is, if we can get those on people's calendars early...
Sure.
You know, I think June 18th's a, you know, a week and a day away, and so if anyone's watching today and just hearing about that now, particularly as we think about the fall and people get busy with back to school and so forth...
Certainly, yeah.
Like, let's take the opportunity to get those dates on the calendar now so that people know when they can come see these videos, see these plans, and participate in a forum like that.
Agreed. I think the only thing that will dictate the dates a little bit is where DOT falls into this, because VHB will be meeting with Mass Department of Transportation, you know, at various points, and that will guide a little bit of the process, because then that's when they'll have updates for us, you know, certainly. But I agree, the more notice we can provide, absolutely. I think that makes a ton of sense, absolutely. Further comments?
I'd just also like to eventually get a better understanding of how this plays with things like complete streets. I mean, I know we were not successful last year in that, but it seems to me like the cycle is coming around again. I just reviewed the capital investment projects, I know that there's continued funding for that, and so I don't want to lose sight. I understand that it's not directly relevant, but it certainly seems complementary and that we should think about it as a package.
I think any extent of overlap we can have, absolutely makes a lot of sense, and I think complete streets is an asset that's somewhat underutilized right now.
Yeah, I think we need to put some time into it, though, and really kind of think about, and it's certainly not limited to downtown. Complete streets may allow us to expand into Greenwood and other areas, so...
Further thoughts? All right. Moving on to constituent issues, item number seven. Councilors have the opportunity to briefly report any issues related by constituents that are not included on our current agenda, just a reminder that no votes will be taken at this time, but items may be included on a future Town Council agenda.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Paul and I actually had a couple conversations with some constituents about one of our favorite intersections last week, the week before, intersection of North and Main Street. Obviously Duncan Donuts is a very busy place, especially at rush hour, so some folks are having major problems getting through. This is not some anomaly, a lot of parks in town have difficulty getting through at rush hour, but maybe the Traffic Advisory Board could look into this, and so when you're coming from Main Street going towards Melrose, you have Enterprise Rental on the right side, Duncan Donuts on the left. A lot of cars are trying to get left into Duncan Donuts parking lot, and I'm sure that's jammed a lot between 7:30 and 8:30 for sure in the morning hours. I don't want, I don't think it's a good idea, but that can be looked into. Eliminating any parking spots in front of like Enterprise Rental would be horrible, but everything's on the table, I guess we're trying to help. But I hate to lose any spots, but taking a left into it, maybe it can be a no-left turn. Don't want to hurt the business either, but it is a tough spot, so... Paul.
And just to clarify, and you're finding that during morning rush hour?
It seems like that's the base problem, right?
Okay.
Morning, and I go through there as well, same time period, but...
I drive through it every morning.
Yeah.
Cars are parked a little funky.
Right.
It backs it all up, and with the construction of that new unit, the condos, doesn't help because the trucks are scorching a little bit on the street.
Right.
And then people take illegal left turns.
Somebody mentioned eliminating those parking spots in front of Enterprise, but I hate to lose any spots, so maybe there's another way to deal with it.
Okay.
So we appreciate it.
We had a similar issue in Greenwood, I know, and we ended up just doing a no parking during the rush hour, in essence.
Right.
So we can always, we can add it to the agenda, perhaps, discuss that.
But something, you know, Traffic Advisory, I mean, they're great, so take a look into that. I'm sure they've heard some other folks before.
Certainly.
But, thank you.
Counselor DeNaco.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To go further what Mr. May just said, so we were approached by a few individuals regarding that one location, but I do agree with the latter component, that if we can do the same thing that we did in Greenwood and restrict parking in front of Enterprise, say between 7, 9 o'clock, so that it opens up a lane for people to get into the right, even though you're not supposed to pass on the right. You can get to the right and around any car trying to get into Duncan Donuts. We've been through the no-left turn issue going into Duncan Donuts before. I don't think it's enforceable, personally. People do it all the time. They make a left turn, right turn on any business up and down Main Street. So to actually enforce it without putting an island or a sign dead center in the street, I don't see that happening, but I think you could make it so that you could restrict parking for a period of time in the morning so that traffic flows freely by anyone that's trying to get in there. Just an idea, but that's my comments on it.
I will forward this along to the Traffic Advisory Committee, and then we'll ask them to consider it, and then we will come have them report back to us.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Any other, yes, Counselor May.
Just wanted to follow up with Paul. The issue Enterprise Rental is a business, Duncan Donuts is a business, and thinking of them, Enterprise Rental, that's prime time for them, too. I rent a car, that's when I go, 6:30 to 8:30, so that's prime time for them. Now, they have a parking lot on the side, too, so that's a possibility, but I hate to, someone's going to probably lose out a little bit with this temporary change, probably. Just let you know that Enterprise has a couple spots in the front that everyone uses, so... Anyway, that's it, just a quick follow-up.
Well, let's have Traffic Advisory look at it, and I'm sure they'll come back with to us with a solution we can consider. Great, thank you. Any further constituent issues? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number eight. Item number eight is the 50th Anniversary Wakefield Soccer Association Festival of September 8th, 2019. I believe we have some representatives here?
Just one.
That's all we need.
Mr. Chairman, Counselor DeNaco, my name is Mike DeGraw, I think I know my chairperson here. So, I'm going to actually talk to you about two different events. Ironically, the soccer tournament isn't for the Soccer Association, but I'll discuss that. So we'll start with the Soccer Association. This year, Wakefield Soccer Association turns 50 years old. So we had decided that we want to have some sort of a recognition event as part of that. So we have decided that on Sunday, September 8th, we're going to have, the idea is to set up the Galvin Turf Field Complex, and that would also include the parking lot between the two turf fields, sort of block it off, have all sorts of carnival events, games primarily for the kids, but some adults perhaps as well. And the idea is we were going to have local vendors come down and sell food, so it benefits them as well. And I think, I think everybody, Sherry, does everybody have the, yeah, so you all have, so there's two packages. One has three pages through it, that's the one that is the Soccer Association. So it goes through and describes the event itself a little bit, and some of the various activities are going to include, my favorite one is bubble soccer, and if you look on page two of your attachment, you'll see how the bubble soccer works. You like to have a competitive Town Council game, perhaps? We can talk about that later. Everybody's okay putting a bubble on and trying to kick a soccer ball, I suppose. We estimate we'll get somewhere around 1,000. That would be children, as well as parents. Hopefully, people that are out of the program come back, too, as kind of a recognition of a program that's been a staple around here for a long time. It's 50, I've been with the Soccer Association for about 20 of those years, so it's kind of an interesting milestone for all of us in that regard. So there won't be no alcohol involved. I believe they spoke to you, Chief, about the event, and the discussion talked about the fact that we don't really think we'll need a parking detail, but we may want to have an officer there just in case if that's...
I see you.
Yeah, if we want to do that. We've certainly talked to the GPW about this as well, and they're all aware about additional barrels and things of that sort. We've also talked to the Board of Health Representative, Julie Keough, because there will obviously be food distributed there, waters, maybe some other sorts of drinks as well. So the event is, we're also going to have some sort of medical support. Now, it's only three hours, you know, chances are in September it won't be that hot, but the idea would be to have someone there if something were to happen, just, and so we're working with the Wakefield High School trainer, Sue, to try to figure out if we can have someone attend the event, just as a precautionary measure more than anything else as well. If for some reason it rains, and we certainly hope it doesn't rain, because we're not sure what we would do with 1,000 people, we'll also have the Civic Center. We wouldn't be able to move everything inside the Civic Center, but we do the best we could. Certain events, like the bubble soccer, could still take place in the rain if we chose to do that as well, so. I wanted to certainly present the event... I wanted to certainly present the event, see if there are any questions, any concerns you may have, and just make sure you are all comfortable with us conducting this on September 8th.
With that said, are there any questions of any of the councillors? Vice Chair Santos.
I have no qualms because of you. So anything you touch, Mike, I am good with, because I know how well organized I've been involved with other things that you've done. So it sounds fabulous. It sounds like so much fun. I'm not getting in a bubble, but.
Oh, come on.
Maybe. I don't know. But, yeah, you've thought of everything, so I think it's really exciting.
Yeah, I mean, I can't take much of the credit on this one. Chris Smith, who was on the soccer board with Ann Miller and I, who was the one done, but he couldn't be here tonight. So I was already coming for the other one. He said, do you mind doing this one for me? So Chris deserves all the credit.
Collaboration with others.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Dinaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Mike, it looks great.
Great.
I wish you best of luck on putting on an event. It's not too easy. My only concern is the bouncy house obstacle course. Mr. Chairman threw you to Mr. Mayo, Town Council. Do we have a policy regarding the use of the, what's the requirements for bouncy houses on town property?
So Mr. Mullin, are you able to answer that?
I don't think we have a formal policy that is that specific to.
A bouncy house. If you're concerned about.
The liability side.
Liability, I really wouldn't be. You know, we, this is why we have insurance. This is why we have the Mass Tort Claims Act. Every case that could be brought against us is limited to $100,000. We're fully insured for it. And it's not as easy as most people think to find a municipality responsible for negligence.
I should probably clarify, Paul, what the bouncy house is, too, because that might help. It's not your traditional bouncy house that we grew up in, cracked heads with other kids jumping in it in the past. It's really an obstacle course. So that hopefully will minimize the opportunity for those types of things to happen, if that helps at all.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just looking out as far as the liability side of this. That's all. I appreciate your help.
Yeah, pleasure.
Thank you, Tom.
councillor May, I'm sorry, councillor Butt.
Mike, this is great. And Ann and Chris and everyone else, thank you. I just, have you talked to Dan McGrath at the recreation?
Yeah. Sorry, I should have mentioned him.
Just want to make sure he wasn't listed here. And so the Civic Center would be available in case of a.
Right.
Rain emergency.
Right, right.
That's great. And I love seeing this as the Women's World Cup soccer started on Friday. I grew up playing soccer, not bubble soccer, but I. This is great. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that Dan and I, I really appreciate you guys going to Chief and the Police Department before coming to us. So they're all on board with this.
Yeah. These things usually start with Dan, anyway, because we have to make sure we can have the field available to us, anyway, so absolutely.
Thank you.
councillor Chines?
So first of all, congratulations on the 50th anniversary. You know, as someone who has children who participate in Wakefield Soccer, it's great to see that it's been so long-lasting and appreciate the thought and the preparation that went into all of this. This is more just a suggestion for my fellow councillors, but perhaps as part of our support for this, we can consider challenging the school committee to a game of bubble soccer. Vice Chair Santos, perhaps, not so excited.
Oh, we would crush them. No. I know, you don't.
I leave that out there for future discussion.
Absolutely.
I think that's a reasonable suggestion, indeed.
Well, you let us know if you want to form a team. We'd be more happy to arrange it for you as well.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion then.
Can I just make one comment, Mr. Chair? Of course, thank you. Just so the council knows, and I'm putting in support and Mike knows that, we've talked. On events like this, when it's a large event, we do have a, I call it a logistical meeting, where we have every discipline there, police, fire, border health, what have you. We go through all contingencies, and we'll have that here, too, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, emergency management. So we do that in every event, but I think it's important for everyone to know that. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the request of item number eight, the 50th anniversary Wakefield Soccer Association event on September 8th, 2019, as described.
Second, Julie's.
Moved by councillor Smith-Galvin, seconded by vice chair Santos. Any further discussion or any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the request for the September 8th, 2019 event for the Wakefield Soccer Association. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, seeing that the vote is unanimous, the motion passes, and congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for a successful Sunday. Next?
Or pray for a nice sunny day.
Yeah, believe me, yeah. Like all these. So the second event is an event that, as I spoke to earlier, is really to benefit the food pantry. First of all, thank you for many of you worth of the breakfast last week, and obviously you and we were all surprised by the presentation of a very substantial check at the end of that. And that is great because the food pantry has had some real challenges of late. The donations have really started to drop off. Some of them with the tax law and whether it's deductible, whether it's real or perceived, donations have dropped off quite a bit. So the impetus for an event like this soccer tournament really came from the fact that we needed to find other means of getting revenue. And having been involved in many different organizations here, I always feel a bit guilty when I continually hit the same Wakefield business for donations over and over again. So the idea was to try to create an event that could benefit them but wouldn't require them to cut a check for the event as well. So that was kind of important for us, bringing people in from out of town, which will certainly happen with this as well. So we, how, the Wakefield Food Pantry came up with running a soccer tournament. Well, Ann and I are both on the soccer board, and we've talked about a soccer tournament because of having these four turf fields. I mean, what a wonderful resource we have. And as I say to Steve all the time, I pinch myself because I remember filling holes in the field when they were all grass. So it's a luxury we all appreciate a great deal as well, so we thought maybe we would do a soccer tournament. Now, the Soccer Association is very financially well-off. So it isn't as if the Soccer Association really needs to raise money at this point in time, and that's good. You know, they've saved money over many, many years before I started, but the food pantry certainly does. So Ann, I give her all the credit. She said, why don't we do a soccer tournament to benefit the food pantry? And it just made a lot of sense, and the Soccer Association fully supports it, and they'll certainly help us in this regard, too. So the dates that we have worked with Dan in regards to are technically Friday, August 16th through Sunday, August 18th. We may not have many games on Friday, but we want to leave that as an option if we had a lot of enrollment in that regard. And the idea would be to use all four turf fields. So I've spent some time talking to Dan, Brendan Kent, the high school coaches. Football starts that weekend, so I've worked with Coach Rafferty so that we could perhaps open up some time slots around their workouts that they have. Field hockey, I'm going to use it. There's captain's practice. So at this stage, we have the field availability locked in at this point in time. And the food pantry, unlike a lot of other events, the organizations, doesn't really have a signature event. You know, Jay's not here right now, but, you know, they have the crawlathon, we have the trivia, but the food pantry really doesn't have a thing. And the food pantry, unfortunately, has been, a little bit of the challenges have been, it's been around, everybody hears about the food pantry and, you know, drop-off cans and things. So people think that the food pantry must have food that they don't know what to do with. That really isn't the case. A very high percentage of our food is obtained by going to the Greater Boston Food Bank and paying for it. It's always great to get donations from local individuals, and that's great. It builds community awareness, and it's a good thing to do, have those drives. But the preponderance of our food does come from paying for it in some way, shape, or form at a reduced cost. So because of the donations going down, we were getting very concerned in our ability to continue to feed the population that we feed now. And we'd ideally like to feed more if we could get them in. There's certainly a stigma attached with people coming there as well, so trying to find ways to overcome that as well. So we thought of this soccer tournament as one way to begin that process, to find other alternative sources of revenue. So this one isn't as far along in the planning stages as the soccer was, because, as the soccer's 50th anniversary is. So there are things that, I haven't talked to the chief yet. We haven't really talked to the Board of Health yet. So a lot of things soccer has done are certainly on our list as we go forward in planning for this tournament as well. So we will have the Civic Center available to us. That's primarily if it's really hot and the kids at Galvin want someplace to go. We haven't quite figured out what we would do with the Landergan facility in regards to that. But the idea about having some medical personnel is probably more important for that event than it is for the Soccer Association because that's in September, and it's only three hours. Mid-August, it's going to get pretty hot out there in the turf field. Makes it even seem hotter. The idea around food is that the food pantry would be selling food, very basic fare. You came to the Galvin when we were doing the junior boosters.
Right.
So we'll do something similar to that, just basic pizza, chips, things of that sort. The hope is, obviously, and we'd like to coordinate, getting some of these people to go downtown. If they have enough of written games, go into downtown and have lunch or whatever may be the case as well. So that is our hope as we go forward there as well. So a little bit of, you know, the rain, there is no rain date for this. The Galvin certainly wouldn't be able to incorporate it, so we'll, if it happens, you wait a half hour, hopefully the lightning doesn't come back, and you do what you can in regards to that. So certainly more to come on tying up some of the loose ends that we're following the lead with the soccer celebration about as well. But once again, I wanted to present it, see if anybody had any questions for us, any concerns, and certainly there'll be more updates as we go forward. Steve and I really just met about a week or so ago to talk a little bit about this. So I wanted to present it and see if anybody had any questions.
With that, does anyone have any questions? All right.
Maybe just a comment.
Certainly.
You know, I appreciate sort of the work that's gone into this and the, you know, the interest in doing something like this for the food pantry. I certainly hope we can move forward with it and that it is successful. I was wondering, just a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, for us, if it makes sense maybe to have you come back at our next meeting, perhaps when you've had a chance to meet with the chief and with the town administrator, just to fill in some of the loose ends.
Right. I'll double-check with Mr. Mullin on this. My understanding is that this event would only require a Board of Health approval. I don't know, I think this is more informational for our purposes. I don't understand us to actually have to be approving anything.
I think that's right, yeah.
Right. So in that, so in that case, if anyone wants to offer perspective, certainly, or ideas by all means, but otherwise, it sounds like this will be something that you'll be working through the Board of Health to make sure you're compliant.
I mean, certainly, I'd certainly, I have no problem coming back if you.
Right, certainly, yeah.
That's certainly fine as well.
Yeah, I just, you know, just technically it doesn't require this body to vote to approve what you're requesting, and that's why it's not.
Great. That's great. No, sounds great.
Can I just ask a question? So why do we have to vote on the last one? Is there something I missed?
I think on the other one, you have games and structures going on in the parking lot, where this is going to be just like any sporting event.
Okay.
You know, there'll be parking in the parking lot, and maybe they'll be selling food, but not those structures.
All right.
That's the tipping point, yeah.
So we'll try to use the refreshment building up at Landergan for that facility. We don't have that luxury at Galvin, so we'll just have some sort of a tent structure set up there to. Once again, it's pretty easy when you have really basic food fair that you're giving out anyway, so.
And again, that's driven by the Board of Health, and that's, and so you're known to be in compliance with them on that, but as far as we're concerned, there's nothing for us to be voting on, technically. Well, thank you very much for both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is item number nine, licenses and permits. 9A is entertainment license. It's a renewal submitted by the BB Library. And the library is seeking a license renewal for Plaza Jazz. That would be Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., beginning July 11th, 2019, and extending through August 29th, 2019. I don't think they're playing continuously, but I think they're playing much of that period, and a vote will be anticipated. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the approval of this license renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by councillor May, seconded by councillor Dinaco. I'll now open up for discussion. Any discussion? Councillor Dinaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Plaza Jazz has been a great opportunity to bring in people to the downtown. They must have 40 people each time sitting on the chairs, and those are just the ones that are actually on the plaza themselves, listening to the music. And once that music starts, it's like a magnet. It just draws people to the library, so. I don't think there's ever been any incidences that I know of. It's a great opportunity for the town, so I'm fully in support of this.
Any further discussion? All right. The motion before you is the approval of the renewal of the entertainment license by the BB Library for the Plaza Jazz from July 11th through August 29th. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Seeing a unanimous vote, the motion passes 7-0. Next, item number nine B, a one-day liquor license requested by Susan Shiver Shay. The applicant is seeking a one-day liquor license for a private event at the Crystal Community Club on September 7th, 2019. Application has been provided to us. Vote anticipated. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Made by vice chair Santos, seconded by councillor May. Any discussion?
Doesn't the 3Cs have a liquor license? Don't they have a full bar there?
Yes, but these would be non-members, so they have to get a one-day.
Oh, so that bar is only for members. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, the motion before you is the approval of a one-day liquor license for Susan Shiver Shay for a private event at the Crystal Community Club on September 7th, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a unanimous vote of 7-0, the motion passes. And we move on to item 9C. This is a request for a second-hand dealer license. This is a renewal for Rada Boutique. The shop is located at 394 Main Street, and the application submitted is seeking renewal of the current license with a vote anticipated. I will entertain a motion for.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize the license for 394 Main Street, Rada, Frolixteen, Rada Boutique.
Seconds.
The motion was made by councillor Dinaco, seconded by vice chair Santos. Open up for discussion. Councillor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious as to why the, we're getting the license renewal application now for the years 2016, 17, 18, and 19.
Took us four years to chase her to get the money. Honest.
So I know last time we spoke about, you know, sort of thinking through a process around late renewal applications. And again, I'm not, you know, opposed to approving this today, but I, again, I think this is another instance where it highlights the importance of having that policy.
Complete agreement on all fees, so we'll bring them all back.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of a license renewal for Rada Boutique for a second-hand dealer license for her shop at 394 Main Street. All those in favor? Seeing a vote in favor of 7-0, the motion carries. Item number 10 is updates. Branding and wayfinding. I'll turn this over to town administrator Mayo.
Actually, to Mr. Dinaco, so.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That's okay. He was the chair of the committee, so.
Indeed, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Mr. Chair, I'm going to give you all an update going back to inception, only because there was a few members not on the board back then when this started. So I'm just going to do it real quickly. So at the end of 2017, this body, the members of this body, voted to put together a committee. That committee was of 21 public, private people that were, so it would be people from the town and people from the community that were picked for it. So there was 20 members total on that committee. The first meeting was on December 7th of 2017, which actually was a collection of thoughts of those people at the meeting trying to understand what the wayfinding and branding actually meant. So the goal was to better tell the story of Wakefield and directing visitors to our wonderful downtown and offer a brand that was unique to the town of Wakefield. But the real purpose of the wayfinding branding committee was that, to communicate to the public in an effective and cohesive manner that what Wakefield's image and sense of place should be. And that's what we set forth and we moved forward with. So what is our identity, and what do we, and how do we promote that? That was what our thought process was going into it. And to get that point across, a lot of the time was spent on discussing colors, themes, shapes, signage. A lot of components went into that, and it was all necessary in order to develop the key that would be used when we produced anything. So once we picked the type of sign, once we picked street signage, entrances to Wakefield signage, bike path, parking, it would all have a branded image on it. signage, bike path, parking, it would all have a branded image on it. And we worked on that for seven meetings throughout the course of 2018, and it brings us now to the point where we are looking at all those kits of parts. We've had a session where we invited the public to come in, look at the maps, take a sticker, just like we're doing with the Envision, and say, where do we think signage should be, and what type of signage should be at those locations. So, our consultant, Mr. Faverman, he took that now and worked with the DPW, and it's an ongoing process right now. They're still working on it. So, they're going out and they're putting signage on the field and they're saying, does this work here? Does it enough room to put this here? That's just one component that's working on there. There are still many needs out there that we have to address. So, the needs of this right now come down to, we still need to authorize the expenditure of forty thousand dollars for the signage when that time comes. That's one of the issues that we need to do. The field testing of locations is still ongoing. The ability to fit this into the envisioned Wakefield is another issue now where it's not slowing us down, but we have to think of how we could work that into the streetscapes that we're developing for the Envision process. An issue that came up, and it's a sad issue in that, is that our design initially that came out for the branding had a picture of the downtown, but it had the steeple of the church that burned down in it. So, it split the board of that committee. It was a ten-eight vote, whether or not to keep it in the picture or to remove it from the picture. So, we're still struggling with that component as to what will ultimately be presented by Mr. Faverman to this board in the future. Next steps, complete field verification of all the locations and need to occur. We need to coordinate the format and design with new website design, which Jen McDonald's working on, because we need to make sure that all fonts, all colors, whatever we use in one area should be what's used on the website, so there's no discrepancies when people see different shades of colors. Then this board has to approve it in the end. So, this whole package will have to come before the board, but Mr. Faverman will be doing that. He will be the one that will be sitting down and explaining from the start to the end. And through this whole process, Mr. Faverman also worked on with Main Streets to develop the kiosk design, because that had to be tied in as well to what we were trying to move forward with, with the branding and the wayfinding area. At some point, I'm not sure when it will be, but there should be a presentation to the council in its entirety. So, that brings everything up to snuff to this point, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Dinoco. Are there any questions? Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Thank you for presenting this, because I have had some questions from people. Is the wayfinding and branding committee still meeting? There's been some...
So, as of right now, we have not met. I think Mr. Faverman has gotten to a point right now where he is now waiting to get answers from the DPW on our locations, because it's trial and error, can you go out there and fit it? And he's also working on other communities now, so he spent a full year with us.
Well, and I do have a question about that, so I want to come back to that, because it's the last minutes that I see posted are from September. The fire happened in October, so I guess, when I say kind of go to the minutes, I try to refer people to the committee.
September 26th is the last set of minutes that you will see on this.
Right, so there was a meeting subsequent to that?
After?
Yes.
No.
So, how did you take a vote on changing the photo, because the church...
We haven't changed the photo.
I thought you just said there was a ten-to-eight vote, and it split the committee.
I think there was a polling done out where people felt, but there was no meeting. So, there's nothing official.
Okay, so there's not been any discussion over...
Correct.
No.
Okay, so there's not been any publicly posted discussion over this?
Correct.
Okay. Because that's the feedback that I'm getting, is that people want to talk about this, and it was unclear whether the committee was meeting and whether there would be an opportunity to do so.
The committee has not met. We haven't officially had a meet, an open meeting. The polling was that whether or not we would want to make a change or not make a change or make a...
And was the polling of the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
How can you poll of a committee without having a meeting, Mr. Mullin?
I think we're just asking people's opinion. It wasn't binding.
Okay, it was not binding.
No, no, there's no binding.
Okay.
It was interesting to see.
So, I guess I would just leave it that I think the public should have an opportunity to have a meeting and discuss this in a posted meeting.
I think that that would be, yeah, that will happen, but there has to be another meeting anyway scheduled when there's information to provide to a committee.
Okay, so I think that's what I would like to leave this with. My question to you, perhaps, Steve, Mr. Mayo, is, is Faverman still under contract to be helping with this? I mean, I know there's been a lot of branding work done, not so much on signage, but on fonts and website and whatnot, and are they still under contract to be assisting with this?
He is under contract, yes.
Okay, okay.
I don't think I've seen a bill in a while, which is nice.
Well, yeah, and I just want to make sure that he hasn't moved on to other clients and that he is still a priority.
No, no, he's also very much involved in the Envision project, so he's in that too.
Okay, okay. And I guess just finally, I think a lot of good work was done, you know, over the course of a year or two. It would just be really nice, and I think I've said it before, as we have parking enforcement coming on, let's get some of these signs out. I don't think we need to wait for perfection and millions of dollars from Envision. I think there are some signs, not all by any means, but some signs that we can get out and start using.
If I could just speak on that piece. I have spoken with our town administrator on that, Chief Scory and Jen McDonald regarding, you know, the parking enforcement, because as we know, this is a very well-thought-out information campaign that Chief Scory will be able to touch on when he will need us to speak. And that's part of this, this discussion, I've also spoken with Counselor Dinoco on it as well. There is nothing holding us back from certain of the elements, as Mr. Dinoco described. It's a kit of parts, so there are parking directional signs. By all means, we can pick those up. Jen McDonald, our communications manager, has done a phenomenal job in working with the Faverman group to make sure that we have a consistent look and feel. In essence, it's a style guide that's being devised now, and in fact, even those watching this evening will see that as their names appear, that font is what is proposed as the new universal font, and our meeting agendas are also consistent with more of the look that we're going towards. It's kind of like a trial run, I'd say, for it right now. And there will be a convergence certainly of the branding and wayfinding, I expect, with both the parking enforcement elements, so that when we can identify parking with that proper signage that has been vetted through the committee and received public input, and also the Envision project as well, certainly. So, I think that the paths that were perhaps somewhat separate are coming more together, either, be it parking enforcement, Envision, or branding and wayfinding. So, I think your point is a good one, though, Counselor Smith-Galvin. Mr. Mullin?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to head off the three or four dozen people who are about to file open meeting law complaints against the town of Wakefield. We can't poll boards that are public bodies. I realize that there's a feeling that if no decision is made, if it's only an expression of opinion, then there's no harm, no foul. The Attorney General doesn't take that position. The Attorney General says if there's an expression of opinion on a matter within the jurisdiction of the board that shared among a quorum by telephone, word of mouth, email, whatever, that is, that's a meeting, and you can't have a meeting without posting it. So, you know, if the board is going to meet again, it really needs to post properly and not discuss anything other than the one subject you can discuss is scheduling. When are we going to meet and where? Anything else, we really need to reserve to a meeting.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Dinoco, for your work on this and the work of the committee. I know it's taken a lot of time and, you know, look forward to seeing some of the results of that. Just a suggestion and request that maybe we try to sort of accelerate or sort of wind up the branding piece of the work sooner rather than later, given that some of the, you know, the fonts, the colors and so forth already are out in some forms, whether it's the kiosks or our meeting minutes, you know, just so that, you know, if we are looking to get a consistent look and feel for the documents we pulled together for the town, that we actually get that information, get that style guides kind of squared away sooner rather than later, so you don't have, you know, sort of deviation from that brand before it even becomes official.
We also want to match the website, so that's coming out right now, so that's kind of what we're waiting for.
I do think a point of clarification there should be that Jen McDonald is working on that independent of the branding and wayfinding. The branding and wayfinding is an element to this overhaul of look and feel, but in terms of, you know, fonts and colors and style and like, because she's working on things like letterhead for town departments and everything like that. That's ongoing, that's independent work, in essence. The branding and wayfinding was more, to my recall, identifying where best to place signage, more kind of public outwardly, you know, facing information, whereas what you're talking about, Counselor Chines, is well underway, continues to be underway as, you know, we have a website redevelopment and the like all going forward on that. So, that is full steam ahead. The signs, things like the kit of parts that Paul described, things like the parking signs and parking directional signs, they could be implemented at any point, and that's something that we spoke about in the context of parking enforcement, may make sense. Even some of the signs, the two-hour signs and the four-hour signs you hear about from Chief Scory, those were also with an eye towards how do we have a more cohesive look relative to that.
So, maybe just to clarify then, so the work that Faverman is doing is really focused on taking the brand identity that we are developing internally through Jennifer McDonald and applying that to the sign. I guess, I'm trying to understand exactly where sort of the division of labor is.
I think it's perhaps the reverse of that. I think that the committee that came together identified certain fonts and styles and a look and feel in a more general sense, like I could say, like ethereal way. Then Jennifer McDonald, in her capacity, has continued to work with Faverman directly more on the internal, I guess logistics is probably the best way to describe it, you know, the website, making sure that we have consistent letterhead for each town department, making sure that there is a quote-unquote Wakefield brand, you know, that we have, so that our meeting agendas look the same way that the DPW's letterhead would look, the same way that the website would look, so there's a real consistency or continuity that is currently lacking right now, even across departments. So, she's really kind of spearheading that operation, I think is the best way to describe that work. So, there's certainly plenty of overlap, and I do think that a lot of the design elements that she's working with now were the result of the efforts of branding and wayfinding, but branding and wayfinding, most of that focus after the initial lettering and the like was more focused on placement of signs and how to direct people around vehicular traffic and the like. Is that fair, Counselor Dinoco?
Yes, so if I may, so right now, just for the general public, if you, because all information that is held at a public meeting is public knowledge, if you look and request the information that is out on the September 26th, 2018 minutes, you will see the key that is described. You should, because this was part of the accepted plan. You will see the location map as part of that as well, too, so it's, anything that was part of that public meeting should be public knowledge, so it was, if we said that this is the key that we accepted, it should be there, so people can get an idea of what type of signage we're talking about, the color scheme we're talking about, the possible locations for them, and then move forward. As far as Jen and this, I consider Jen the app-applier to what comes out of the committee and approved by this board. Once that's done, she has to incorporate that into the website.
Yep.
Okay, it's not the other way around.
Yeah, so I guess the question that I go back is, I'd say, if we could, I'm sorry, I apologize for jumping in. I think it makes sense for us to accelerate that process, given that there's already work happening that I guess we technically need to approve from a design standpoint. I mean, I don't, again, have concerns about the, you know, what the font looks like and so forth, but, you know, given that we've got a lot of work happening in parallel, I think the more, the sooner we can kind of nail down that style guide and get that into production, cutting it better off.
Absolutely, and Jennifer is working very hard on that. I know, I was speaking with her today on that, and I know that she's, I agree, that's absolutely an important point, so thank you for making it.
Any further questions or comments? All right, so as this was an update, there's no vote required relative to that. So, we'll next move on to item number 11, the scheduled public meetings. 11A is setting of the liquor license hearing. For both of these, A and B, we simply need to set a date for a public hearing. In this case, A is the setting of a public hearing date for CNC MCC LLC, doing business as Blue Moon Grill, for an all-alcohol license. They are located at 955 Main Street, and the proposed date would be June 24th, 2019, which would be our next scheduled council meeting at 7:10 P.M. So, with that information, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Open for any discussion. Okay, seeing none, the motion before you is the setting of a liquor license meeting for CNC MCC, doing business as Blue Moon Grill, for a hearing date of June 24th, 2019 at 7:10 P.M. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing that the motion passes seven-zero. Item 11B is the setting of the water and sewer rates, public hearing. This again is simply to set the date of the public hearing for the setting of water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2020, beginning July 1st of 2019, and the date proposed could be June 24th, 2019 at 7:20 P.M. I will entertain a motion relative to this agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Any discussion on this item? All right, so the vote being taken here is the setting of the water and sewer rates, a public hearing for June 24th, 2019 at 7:20 P.M. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, seeing the vote is seven-zero, motion carries. Item number 12 is presentation and action items. 12A is merchant and longer-term parking issues. I'm pleased to welcome our new Police Chief Scory to present information regarding the extended parking spaces for Union Street and Common, as well as possible one-way streets, Common Center and Princess.
Good evening, Chief.
How are you? So, I'm here to talk about our new parking enforcement program. As this gets closer to the July 1st start date, we continue to tweak the plan a little bit to try and accommodate all of our shopkeepers downtown and the people who visit us here in Wakefield. So, Jennifer McDonald, we've talked a lot about her tonight, she's been very important to this whole program, and she's taken a lot of phone calls from merchants downtown that had concerns about their customers not having any place to park if we only had a two-hour limit. Their concern was that they needed up to three and four hours. So, what we did is we looked at the downtown area to try and come up with a few areas where we could designate long-term four-hour parking, long-term parking for merchants and four-hour parking for our visitors and customers. So, when I originally wrote this letter for the council on May 22nd, I had listed three bullet areas where we could make four-hour parking, and I want to expand on that a little bit as I go along here. But the first area we talked about was Common Street. Currently, there are five designated merchant parking spots on the east side of Common Street, and what we thought would be a good idea is to change both sides of Common Street to long-term parking for merchants and four-hour parking for our visitors. We could do, on the west side, we could allow long-term parking from five Common Street to Yellav, and on the east side, we could allow for long-term parking from Church Street to the southern end of the Rockery. This would create about twenty-three parking spaces. It would be both long-term for visitors and for merchants. And then we looked at Union Street. There are eight parking spaces between the rear exit of the Dollar Store and Princess Street, and we felt that these would be a great location for merchants central to downtown area and for long-term parkers, make that a four-hour limit as well. The nine parking spaces that are on the other side of Union Street on the west side would remain just two-hour parking. And then we looked at the town-owned lot adjacent to the Almond Headquarters as well, making that four-hour parking as well as merchant parking. And what I didn't, what I included in this letter when I originally wrote it was that we would leave the three parking spaces in the Smith Street lot and the three merchant spaces on Main Street that would remain the same. I think it would be a good idea to change that, make them both long-term, four-hour parking and merchant parking, keep everything consistent. Overall, this would create seventy-plus spaces that would be both long-term and merchant parking, which should accommodate everybody that needs to access our downtown. All the parking spaces on Main Street, we remain two hours and fifteen minutes. It would be seven, fifteen minutes spots, the rest would be two hours, and I think this would accommodate the needs of everybody that visits us here in Wakefield. So, if we look at the map over here, it'll show the areas that we're talking about. The yellow box on the far left shows Common Street, parking on both sides. The yellow box in the middle has two arrows off of it, one points to the three parking spaces in Smith Street, and then the eight parking spaces on Union Street. The top right designates the Almond Headquarters parking area, and then the bottom right are the three spaces on Main Street just past CVS.
All right, thank you, Chief, for that. Do we have any preliminary questions of Chief Scory? Do we have any preliminary questions of Chief Scori? Council Danaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thank you very much for the presentation on the parking. I like the idea of the Common Street being converted to the four for the merchants and for the long-term visitors to the town, giving them the opportunity to say, go to the library, have a bite to eat, even walk the lake at that matter. An hour would be sufficient, but four hours if they want to go somewhere, other words, to shop. Lincoln Street parking lot, you're going to take the existing three and bump them up from the two-hour up to the four-hours, is that what you're recommending?
Correct, just to stay consistent with the others.
So, and those would have to have four, three separate signs, just so that people understand that it's only three spots?
Correct.
Okay, so that's notion, and we're maintaining the three at the gallon, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then are you making all, is your suggestion, all of the parking in the Omelette Headquarters before?
Before, I was in all-day merchant parking.
And all-day merchant, and the merchant designation is a lanyard?
It's a, it's a little placard that hangs off the rearview mirror.
Off the mirror?
Correct.
So if it's on there, that's a merchant, and they don't get tagged, and if they're missing, they're subject to four hours.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other further questions? Council Chines.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions, mostly for clarification. Can you remind us where the seven 15-minute spots are approximately?
Off the top of my head, there, we put them at the end of each block, on both the north, the east end, west side of Main Street, right next to the crosswalks. I believe there were seven of them total.
Got it, but they're sort of spaced throughout the kind of downtown corner?
They are, they're spaced throughout the downtown area.
Okay. And the second question, do you anticipate that, you know, changing some of these spots to four hours has any impact on handicap parking accessibility or access for any of the spaces that are there? There's no impact for?
There's no changes whatsoever to handicap parking.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, some of the businesses that we heard of that had concerns about the two-hour limit were hair salons, restaurants.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, hair salons and restaurants.
Council Smith Galbraith.
You may have said it, I may have just missed it. So what's the total number of merchant four-hour?
It's right around 70, it's probably on the plus side of 70.
Thank you.
I assume that we're going to do some sort of reaching-out education, the world is not ending, if people have to park at the Omelette Headquarters, like the rest of a lot of us who don't park in front of our buildings to work. The pushback has been surprising a little bit, so I think, once they get used to it, it's not that far, it's well lit, it is not, Wakefield is not a dangerous town to walk around and get to your car. So, I mean, as a town, it's not up to the police department, but just to say, like, give it a chance. If you've got a lot of gripes, come back to us in two months.
My biggest experience with the Traffic Committee is then that anytime we make a change, there's always pushback.
Right.
And then within a month or two, people adapt, they get used to it, and they're fine with it.
Hopefully, that'll be the case, but makes sense. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions or comments? I do just want to add, Chief, that I've worked with you on this, and I know that you've worked very hard and you've been very thoughtful about the approach relative to this, and we heard the concerns of residents to make sure that we had that balance, we heard the concerns of the businesses, to make sure we have the balance there as well, and I do think that the improvements to the Omelette Headquarters lot that I had, you know, mentioned earlier, I think just underscores that, you know, we recognize the need to make sure that we have, you know, a good accommodation for parking. And I think also, we all need to keep in mind that, you know, this is a dynamic, you know, parking arrangement, and it's as simple as moving some signs in order to, you know, better adapt, and we can be nimble with this. And if in a few months' time we find that there's a need for more or less four-hour spaces or more or less 15-hours, whatever the case might be, we can adapt. It's very, very small money to put up a new sign. And so, you know, this is certainly the first pass at this, let's see how it goes, and if we have to make accommodations, we can do that. The goal here is optimization, so whatever we need to do in order to make that happen. And I think, Chief, you'd probably concur with that.
I agree. I think probably by the end of August, we'll have a good feel for where we're at with this, and if there's any changes that we need to make, we can revisit this.
Great, thank you. All right, so the motion before, sorry, there's not a motion currently, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of item 12A. I think we should be clear that the motion would be asking for four-hour-slash-merchant-long-term parking, as the chief has described, and that would include Union Street, Lincoln Streets, the three spots, Main Street and Omelette Headquarters, have I covered that, Chief?
And Common.
And Common, I'm sorry, and Common Street as well, and then the 15-minute spots you've identified. Or have we ever?
The 15-minute spots remain the same as they were.
They are the same as they were, okay. So that would not be included in that. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved, as presented by Chief Scori.
Second for this quick discussion.
All right, so moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Council Danaco. Open for discussion, Council Danaco.
Real quickly, so all we're voting on right now is the placement of the parking as described, it has nothing to do with the one-way streets.
That's correct. This is simply for the four-hour long-term parking.
Thank you, that's it. Thank you.
Further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, the motion before you is as described by Chief Scori, the four-hour-slash-merchant-long-term parking adjustments to the streets that I've identified. All those in favor? Seeing a vote of seven-zero, that motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So are we not discussing one-way streets?
Right, Chief, we also have the one-way streets. Were you planning on addressing that tonight?
Wasn't aware of it.
Okay.
What do you need, I'll take a shot at it.
Possible, possible one-way streets for Common Center and Princess was on the agenda.
Is that part of the, as far as the envisioned Wakefield plan goes?
That was part of, changing those over now, prior to.
Changing those right now.
Right.
No.
That's fine. It was on here, but we.
Keep it simple.
We'll bring it back.
I think that's.
We'll bring it back for a later meeting, that's fine, just want to be sure. Great, all right, thank you, Chief.
Can I just ask, just to clarify, has the Traffic Advisory Committee had the opportunity to discuss that yet, or?
No, we have not.
Okay, so it's, there's probably more than just coming back for our agenda.
Right, exactly, right.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, item 12B is the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have a representative from DPW to present a draft, actually, what may be the final draft report of this mitigation plan. You recall that we had a draft report presented at our prior meeting. We've been provided with the final report, and now we're here for any updates, any comment, and then a potential vote on that. So with that, if you could introduce yourselves, please, for the record.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Claire Moss, I am the Town Store Mar Project Manager.
Andy Dennehy with Beta Group, and I'm an associate who is the PM on this project.
Welcome.
Thank you. So the update, we received some comments from the council, and we've addressed those and submitted the final report. So if you have additional comments or questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time. The goal is to eventually submit this in the next week, I think, to MEMA and FEMA for their approval. Once that happens, then you're, you know, eligible for some grant funding for, you know, some of the projects that were identified in the report.
And with that, just to make sure we update the public, so this is the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan update dated June of 2019. At the last meeting, you presented a very thorough overview of this plan. It might be helpful, perhaps, if you could just identify any changes of significance that have been made to this final version as compared with what you presented to us last time.
Absolutely. So one of the biggest things was the inclusion of a little bit more of our public outreach. So our survey was expanded because we had another week's worth or a week and a half's worth of information that would be included in the appendix. We also included a couple of comments that we received from our town councillors to include at least one or two additional critical infrastructure.
Correct.
I think those are the two primarily, primary inclusions that were in addition to our presentation two weeks ago.
Now, this updated plan has been provided to all the council for review in advance last week, has everyone, I assume, has had a chance to review it. Does anyone have any questions for the representatives here this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll then entertain a motion to approve the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan update in its final form dated June of 2019.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Councillor May, seconded by Council Danaco. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, again, the vote now we will be taking relates to the approval of the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan update, June of 2019, in its final form, and the understanding is this would next be submitted to MEMA as a part of the process going forward. So with that understanding, all those in favor?
Aye.
So I see that the motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much for all of your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Fantastic documents. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 12C. And this is flying of flags policy, and this is a discussion that is anticipated to be due to a vote. And perhaps, Mr. Mullin?
Sure.
If you could present.
Mr. Chairman, the things they don't teach you in law school, I had no idea that there were federal statutes about how you present the flag, but had to learn about it fairly quickly. This proposed policy incorporates and tracks the requirements and goes beyond them. It contemplates that the American flag would be flown during the appropriate hours, which is daylight, and at night, if flown, it would have to be illuminated, and only in good weather. Outside the Americal Civic Center, we would not have any other national flag on that flagpole if the American flag were there. You can have non-national flags and banners, but they have to be below the American flag. I provided here, though I don't think it's actually a requirement, that those non-national flags and banners not be larger than the American flag. The crucial thing here is that, is the nature of the group that requests the flag. This contemplates that there are groups that would rent space in the Americal Civic Center, and in connection with that rental, might want to fly a flag or banner from the flagpole. We don't want to have to say yes to every group, because there may be some groups that would present problems for us, and so what we would do under this policy is say we would approve such requests if they come from a public body, which is to say, like, the school committee, the Handicapped Accessibility Committee, whatever, or a town department, such as the DPW, or a nonprofit organization expressly set up to support one of those We would also set forth just how long or maximum period of time that the flag could be flown, and I left those dates blank, or that period of time blank, for you to fill in. And finally, I suggest that we ask that anybody who's making this request make it 30 days in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Initial questions, Vice Chair Santos.
So the duration of use, Tom, for example, the Pride flag doesn't seem to fit necessarily in this, because it says, maybe flown on the flagpole during the period of time when space in the Civic Center is rented by the requesting group? So is there a, am I not reading that accurately, so do you know what I mean?
So I was under the impression that the Pride flag was flown in connection with some group that had rented space in the Civic Center.
For, for a specific, there is an event, but it's Pride Month.
Right, and that's why I suggest here that we allow the designation of a period of time that is greater than the period of rental. So the group might rent the room for only one evening, but want that flag to be up for, say, a week.
So this, so my question would be, if, say they didn't rent the room, I still think it might be appropriate for the Pride flag to fly outside of the Civic Center, as it's connected, you know, as it fits in subsection A, the nature of the group. Am I making myself clear on that one? So if they didn't host an event, would we still allow the Pride flag to fly during Pride Month?
Okay, I guess I was thinking that this was a policy that was supposed to be keyed directly to use of the.
The Civic Center?
Of the Civic Center. Because, no, if you want to make it broader, we have other flags, flagpoles in town.
Okay.
So we should consider whether we want to allow their use as well.
No, I mean, I would, I think, we would just tell them they have to rent it out for a day.
Yep.
You know, we can work around that if that's an issue. But I was just, those were the scenarios going through my mind, if some group fit subsection A but didn't rent it. But I think, you know, I can certainly withdraw any of my concern.
Council Danaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I make a recommendation to the council to consider, as an addition to the policy? If we are concerned as to the use of the poles, couldn't we just install a set of three poles to the right side of the main entrance of the Civic Center, instead of having anything added to the pole where the American flag sits? Have designated poles for the flag to be put on? I mean, if it's just to say, we're giving permission for a flag to be flown on a specific pole, can't we just put a set of three poles, as long as they're not as high as the American flag, and put them to the right entrance, and just leave the pole at Town Hall, the pole at the Civic Center, free of any other flag, and make it just for the American flag?
I do think that that is an option we could consider, certainly. My sense, Mr. Mullin, is that we would still want to have a flag policy regardless of how many poles we had.
Right. The big question is, how do we control the use of any flagpole so as to avoid an obnoxious use, without getting into the legal morass of a content-based restriction?
And I agree with that. I'm not saying I disagree with that, I'm just saying, does it have, do any flags that we allow or agree to be flown have to be on the same pole as the American flag? Can't we put poles in another location near the American flag, but make the pole for our country's flag be exclusive to the flag, instead of having another flag flying from it, no matter what flag it is? Okay, I'm not saying that you would eliminate, or you can control through your own mechanisms to what our policy may be, what, how we allow the flag to be put on there. I'm just saying, give them a designated pole to do it to, or a set of three.
Vice Chair Santos.
There are other poles in town that just have the American flag flying, and so I think we're just talking, is this specifically about the Civic Center?
Yes.
Right, so I don't know that we need to have, to add the cost to have three different poles, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't think, I think three is too many, but we have other places in town where it's just the American flag flying. So this controls the option for another flag to be flown just at the Civic Center, correct?
Yeah. This deals with the situation we have now, which I understand to be, there's one pole outside the Civic Center. Certainly, you could legally have multiple poles.
I do think, Paul, that some of the community feedback I've heard, and there's certainly a balancing whenever you're discussing these issues, and a number of residents feel very strongly that a POW MIA flag flying below the American flag on the Upper Common, for example, is a very appropriate tribute, and that that flagpole should be shared by both the American flag and the POW MIA flag. And so I hear what you're saying, and I just put that out there without necessarily offering an opinion, but instead, I think it's important that we be thinking through all sides of this issue, because it's, you know, these are complex issues, certainly. Council Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I wonder to that end, and, you know, to the points that Council Santos referenced, if we need to look more broadly at a flag policy for the town as a whole? I mean, we're talking about a very specific venue that the town owns, and while I have some questions and thoughts on some elements of this that I want to talk through, you know, I wonder if we do need to have more clarity, not just at the Americal, but as we think about the Common, the Town Hall, the school buildings, things like that, areas where we do have. where we do have flags flying, where we may not have necessarily always had a consistent policy around what gets flown and what doesn't, and what the rules of engagement are. Strikes me that that's something that we may need to think more broadly about.
Further discussion? Okay, so seeing done, what we have before us right now, and what could be voted on, is the use of the flagpole, use of the flagpole at the Americal Civic Center. The only requirement for this policy would be to determine the duration of time that a flag could fly before or after an event. That is what is currently before this body. If this body, if it's the will of this body to move forward with this policy, again, with a further discussion requiring how much time, I would entertain a motion.
So moved on this policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. So that will open up discussion on this policy as outlined by Town Council Mullin. Counselor Smith Galvin?
I just have a logistical question. I think, I know there was some confusion around the size of the flag that we just, so I think if we do approve this, we want to be clear about what size the community group purchases.
You're saying to offer them--
To offer them, it doesn't have to be part of the policy, but just to offer them specs.
So I think we should probably be clear, Mr. Town Administrator, that we identify the specs of the American flag that is currently being flown there, and we expect that size, and make it clear it has to be smaller than that.
Right, and there's certain hooks, and, you know, it has to be a certain size to accommodate on that, on that particular pole. Again, if we decide to stay with that pole, it does have to be part of the policy, but I think it would just be something to offer to the community group.
I think that's a very reasonable point. Is that something that we can--
I think it's standard, and we have it standardized now.
You have that--
We have the size of the American flag and the size of the--
So perhaps we, we need not build that into the policy, but if it becomes an issue later on, we can always adopt that, because, like any policy, this is, could always be subject to, you know, revisiting at some later point. I will say, thank you, Town Council Mullin, for going through the code. I, too, went through the code. It's quite complex, the flag code. It's surprisingly so, and there's a lot of nuances to it, and there's a lot to understand, and I thank you for doing a phenomenal job, as always, on that. Do we have further discussion, or anyone? Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. First of all, just to clarify, you know, the policy doesn't say specifically if there's an approval process for the display of the flag. Is the presumption that that's because it's a Town Council policy, that the Town Council would approve the requests that come in?
Well, what I was trying to do was to create, again, a content-neutral rule such that we would not have the council exercising discretion. That's what I get nervous about, when the council says yes to this flag and no to that one, then we end up having to justify ourselves to a judge.
So in light of that, I do think that makes sense. You know, I would wonder if there are a couple of modifications that might make sense. I'm not making the motion right now, mainly because I'd love to get reactions, Mr. Mullin, from you and from the council. As we think about sort of the nature of the group that approves, if one of the types of groups that could approve is a nonprofit that's explicitly organized to support a town body or a town department, I'm wondering if that clause is necessary. So as an example, if, you know, for example, the Friends of the BB Library wanted to put something together, I mean, if their express purpose is to support the library, could they petition to the Board of Library Trustees to make the request in lieu of that nonprofit? The reason I ask that question is I wonder if that takes some of the ambiguity about what a nonprofit is that is expressly supporting the town, like, would that include, you know, we had, you know, someone from the Wakefield Soccer Association here today? Would that include that or not? I think there are levels of ambiguity that could potentially put us in a scenario where we have a request that isn't necessarily in keeping with the spirit of the policy.
Again, I'd have no problem making that kind of change. Let me just say that, again, I was trying to key this to the situation where somebody arranges for use of the room. And that somebody might not be the Board of Library Trustees, after all, they meet for free in the library. It might well be the Friends of the Library, who are doing a fundraiser, and they might want a banner for a week before and after their fundraiser. And there are very clear requirements under 501(c)(3) for what are called supporting organizations. So if you, if your claim to 501(c)(3) status is that you support something like the Wakefield Library Trustees, you've actually got to say so in your Articles of Organization. And then you've got to say so expressly to the IRS, which then approves you on that basis.
So the intent, so we could sort of interpret that component of it as that the intent would be, would have to be a nonprofit organization that explicitly has that purpose stated in their Articles of Incorporation.
Yeah, right. It says here, 501(c)(3), so it's actually got to have--
Got it.
--tax exempt status from the IRS.
Second question that I had, related to, again, thinking about sort of the types of uses that we would want to see, or the messages advocated by whatever flag or banner is flown, is it worth considering some sort of nondiscrimination clause or something in the policy that, you know, makes it clear? I mean, I would hope that we don't have a 501(c)(3) that's supporting a body of the town that would advocate against for any illegal activity or discrimination, but I'm wondering if that's something that makes sense to clarify explicitly in the policy.
Is it implicit, though, if it's the Department of the Town, and the town has a nondiscrimination policy?
Well, I guess, again, I was trying to avoid any kind of content-based restriction at all, no matter how well-intended. And the thinking was, we can control town departments and boards, to some extent, and they, in turn, can control their supporting organizations. We don't have any control over the Daughters of the Confederacy or whatever.
Well, they can explicitly control the supporting organizations, because they are separate organizations. Well, the supporting organizations may have the policy--
They can influence them.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I have a little bit of anxiety over the, sort of, the lack of specificity around some of that. You know, again, I could get over that, but it's something that I just want to be mindful of and make sure that we're approving something that does, you know, does protect us from making sure that, you know, we don't have, you know, public property being used to advocate for a message that is hateful or discriminatory or promoting illegal activity or anything like that.
I do think, Mr. Mullin, that ultimately, this body, even with a policy, would still have superseding authority, right? So in the event that sort of circumstance did arise, we would be within our authority to change the policy or otherwise.
Oh, sure. I mean, let's say the worst happened, and the Friends of the Library wanted a Nazi swastika.
Right.
Then I would happily defend your board's refusal, and when challenged by the ACLU, I'd say, look, this isn't a First Amendment issue, because the swastika is equivalent to fighting words, and the Supreme Court says over and over again, fighting words are not privileged under the First Amendment.
So try to step, we have a backstop, in essence, in extreme circumstances worthy to arise.
Right.
Does that address your concern, Counselor?
It does, it does. Again, I, you know, I'd say the concern isn't a huge concern. It is still there, but I, you know, recognize, I think, the, you know, the fact that we do have that backstop and the Town Council's willingness to defend us in that very unlikely scenario.
Need further comments?
I was just looking at the Americal Rental Prop, and if it gives you any comfort, Jonathan, it is used for public use of civic, educational, philanthropic, recreational, other uses allowed for profit or nonprofit, having a benefit to the town and surrounding community. So I feel like it's a little bit of a backstop, that also, if we do link it to people having events there, that there is a level of filter there, controlled as well.
Actually, almost like two layers, when you think about it. Like a clearinghouse, and then it would get to that. So there is a motion that's on the floor, and it was seconded, and we've had discussion on that, but we do have the vacancy of time for both. So we, in order to approve the policy, I would imagine someone would like to postpone time. Mr. Mullin, I think you at one point said seven days before, seven days after.
Just as an example.
As an example. So does anyone have, we'd call it an amendment to the motion, I suppose, and, right, Mr. Mullin, to, so I would entertain an amendment to the motion for a duration of time before and after, you know, the event, that we could incorporate into this.
So, again, my question, so if the event is, the event is occurring this Friday, correct?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. I knew, I was in DC, whenever it's occurring, so it's occurring Wednesday. So seven days wouldn't be enough necessarily if we had approved the 30 days for Pride Month, correct? So I'm not sure how we capture that. I mean, this is, you know, if, if Friends of the Library are having a fundraiser, then that makes sense, maybe, to have seven days before, seven days after, but this is a little bit more unique.
You could, Steve has a good suggestion. You could say just, in no event more than a month.
Perfect. And then it's up to, there's some flexibility.
Current month of the event.
Okay.
Because, you know, you have a month that's designated, right? And the event's the 12th, so you don't want to go to the 12th of the next month, maybe, keep it the month that it's in. That might give you the wiggle room.
Don't we capture, though, by the last, by item B, timing of the request, the 30-day requirement? All cementals have to be in 30 days?
No.
You uncover--
No, because it's talking about flying.
How long is it hanging up, is your question?
How long is it flying? The flag is flying, not the request.
Okay, so maybe I didn't understand. So right now--
They have to submit a month in advance.
Correct.
But then, how long do we approve it hanging up for?
But right now, the B states how many days before and how many days after. So we're only talking about 30 days. Are we saying two weeks before and two weeks after? Is that what, that the motion is--
That's the most, if someone is looking to make a motion for the standard, and maybe I should back up. Mr. Mullin, another option perhaps could be that the standardized policy is X number of days before, X number after, and then we can spell out that there can also be a special request made not to exceed 30 days. Is that something that--
Yeah, not to exceed 30 days, and the rental period is, falls anywhere within that 30-day period.
So that way, the general policy is X day to X day, before and after the events, and then if there's a special request made, no more than 30 days, and the event must fall within that 30-day period. Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So how, in that scenario, how does the policy, or how do we think about contemplating sort of conflicting requests? So let's say if you've got two events at the Americal in the same week that both have this sort of plus or minus seven-day piece, is the, I mean, does that conflict come to the Town Administrator, the Town Council? You know, what's the--
I think it's going to be very similar to the next one we're going to talk about, right? We have a tooling kiosk posting.
Take the best coin you have in your pocket.
Well, it might just be first come, first served.
Yeah.
But that's a good point. We don't deal with that here, and we should.
And realistically, not every, there's not going to be a lot of flags flown out.
No, absolutely.
All right, so the current motion is without a duration of time. We would need to amend to establish a duration of time. So I'll entertain a motion, Counselor Chines.
I'd like to move to amend the policy to read, not more than seven days before such period commences, and not much, not more than, excuse me, seven days after such period terminates, and to add a sentence at the end of that paragraph that reads, "Request to fly the flag or banner longer than the time period set forth in this policy may be approved by the Town Council."
Is it Town Council or is it Town Administrator?
I would accept a friendly amendment for it to be Town Administrator.
I move the friendly amendment, yes.
Some writing the sun the flower.
Okay.
And I know there had been discussion relative to not to exceed 30 days. Is that considered by this body?
And the commencement time is variable on us? Isn't that what you mentioned, Anne, as far as the commencement time?
No.
Not being, okay, that's fine.
I believe there was also discussion about the event, the Americal event needing to fall within said 30-day period. Is that correct as well? All right, so do I have a motion, then, to approve the policy for the use of flagpole at the Americal Civic Center with revisions to Paragraph B, duration of use, to read in relevant parts, and its request, not more than seven days before such period commences and not more than seven days after such period terminates. The flag or banner may not be flown on the flagpole during any time when the flag of the United States is not flown, and requests to fly a flag or banner longer than the period set forth in this policy shall be approved by the Town Administrator in no event shall exceed 30 days, and the event shall fall within said period.
That sounds good.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so I have a move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Further discussion on that amended motion, then? Seeing none, I've read that amendment. I think we all understand it, and I probably can't bring it back back.
No, leave it alone.
So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven zero, that amendment passes. So in that case, Mr. Mullin, do I need to still vote on the motion in chief, or have I achieved?
No, I think you've got the gist.
Fair enough. So the motion, then, is approved as amended. Moving on to Item 12d, this is kiosk posting policy. The council will be considering a vote for a kiosk posting policy as presented, and our communications liaisons are Counselor Smith Galvin and Counselor May. Counselor Smith Galvin, I'll turn it over to you, if you could provide an outline.
So Mr. Mayo and I walked through a draft policy on this, and then Counselor May has reviewed it as well. I just want to preface it by saying, this is still very much a draft. I want to walk through the key points. At the end, it'll be kind of my recommendation with what I think we do with it at this point. But in terms of the highlights, this is to cover non-digital kiosks. So specifically, those are the kiosks that will be located or are currently located at Main and Water Streets, North Ave and Hall Park, Main and Albion Streets, and the Wakefield Common. Three of the four sides of the Wakefield Common at Main and Lake are covered under this, because they are not the electronic portion of it. A new email address has been set up for requests. Essentially, what we are proposing is that postings would be showcased in these kiosks for a period of 14 days, and would be added and removed on Mondays, when Mondays aren't a holiday, Tuesdays, when Monday is a holiday. Requests for a period beyond 14 days would be granted at the discretion of the Town Council. And if requests are heavy and there is overlap, then there would be some discretion there as well. Applications would be made to this email address or the Town Administrator's office at least 14 days prior to the intended posting date. There would be specifications around the size and the quality of the printed paper, and there would be essentially, we saw in our last meeting, 18 by 27, which would allow up to four notices to go on to the space, and there would be an option to do one large one as well for special events, that there would be some discretion around. I think importantly, and similar to the conversation we just had, the postings would be considered for public and community events, specifically those hosted by a Wakefield-based organization holding its event in Wakefield, and out-of-town organization holding its event in Wakefield, or a Wakefield-based organization holding its event locally, though outside of Wakefield. So that is where we're trying to kind of focus on Wakefield, because, of course, the purpose of these kiosks are to drive business and community programming. purpose of these kiosks are to drive business and community programming. In terms of restrictions specifically, we're proposing that the event not be posted if it does not promote the Wakefield community as a whole. It would not be able to promote any political events, any business advertising, any sales promotion, lost and found notices, or yard sales unless they're community-wide yard sales, which the environmental committee is hoping to do at some point. The Wakefield Main Streets, which has very generously donated these kiosks, would have the ability to provide us with the town with a rotating set of posters to be used in the event that there is not enough content to go into the kiosks from the community sources. And it just simply says that the kiosks are the town property and that the town of Wakefield maintains authority and discretion over the information posted. Have I missed anything? Steve or Peter?
I think there is an appeal process.
And there is an appeal process, right, for that. And then there's a form as well. So, I was just going to recommend, and for those of us who have it, it's still, there's some, still some red lines. I, in the spirit of the recent bench policy that we have to spend some time looking at it, I would just like to propose that we hold off for about, till our next meeting, so give the community about a week to look at this, post it, really reach out to those we know have a, an interest in this, Main Streets, perhaps Friends of Lakeview, get some feedback, and come back with a more fulsome policy in two weeks. However, in the interim, I would like to propose that we not keep them blank, because I think we can, it's a minimal cost for us to put something in them that thanks Main Streets for their generous donation and whoever their sponsors were. So, perhaps we can quickly get something or perhaps promoting our upcoming Fourth of July, but I would like to see something in there in the interim of the two weeks. And I think Counselor May and I can work with the town administrator to do that.
Can I just answer to that? The map, Historic Trail and Downtown Directory that you saw last time has gone to the Historical Commission.
Oh, good.
And they provided some feedback, which I did then send over to Favorment Group, who's making those, and slight changes, no big deal. Well, maybe, slight changes, I would think slight changes, but maybe clarity. And so, these should be ready to go in the next few days, that we'll be able to just get these in, because these are nice.
So, perhaps we can get those in. I did have an inquiry about, from the Disabilities Commission, whether there's any way to show handicap access or parking on that map. So, maybe we could just look at that one more review.
We don't show any parking. Okay.
Can we clarify, Steve, just with respect to that? My understanding was that historical trail was just buildings. Is that right? Is there parking currently on the historical trail at all?
No, there isn't any. No.
So, perhaps it's not available.
Could I suggest maybe to that end, I don't know, maybe, sorry, maybe if there's, you know, sort of a poster that we could have that, you know, talks about like accessibility downtown, you know, where handicap parking is, you know, things like that, that sort of speak to, how do we make that, that area more, more accessible? Perhaps that can be one of the sort of rotating pieces of standard content that goes into the, into the kiosks to meet that interest.
I will say, on that point, I had the opportunity to meet with Main Street's leadership this morning, and they have done a lot with these, for these kiosks, and I think the town should be very grateful for all the work that they've done to raise the money for them, to see the progress that has been made, see the process through. And one thing that I think is important for this, you know, this private-public partnership that I'd really like to see moving forward on is, is things like Counselor Smith-Galvin was saying, I'll call it almost evergreen content, in that whenever there's an opportunity, and it was actually at the prompting of Main Streets, that if there is information, it's, I don't want to call it filler because it almost minimizes it, but it's evergreen content in that it's content that doesn't, that doesn't usually expire, but instead is informational. So, I think things like handicaps, things like shopping local, anything like that is really important, perhaps some town resources or whatever the case might be. So, that's something that I would like to see us continue to work with Main Streets on, because I know they're very committed to these kiosks. They feel a real ownership to them, and rightfully so. They've done a lot to advance them to a gift, as a gift to the town. And now, they're town property, but that doesn't mean that we still can't, you know, be partnered with them and try and enhance them as best we can. And I know that they're eager partners to do that. For the, Counselor Dinaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to continue on what your way of thinking, I would fully support having Main Streets have a larger say than a lesser say, based upon the opportunities that can come about from that public partnership with them. So, the collaboration with the Main Streets from two, three years ago initiated the crowdfunding to bring forth the monies that supplied us with all the tree lightings, the benches, and then the kiosks. They've been working side by side with the town right along in relationships to that kiosk, like going that extra step and hiring Favorment to make sure that what they produced for the town was within the town's acceptable agreement, so to speak. So, in order to push forward that private-public concept that we're trying to promote this year and into the future, if they are, they are an important organization in my eyes to have here, because they can crowdfund or come up with funding or grants that can benefit the downtown easier than we can, because that's what they're geared for, okay? If we go into Beverly, go into PBD, go into Salem, go into West Cambridge, they're all actively in a partnership with the town government. They work hand in hand, and that's how they survive, and that's how they make everything work out smoothly. I mean, Jen Wallace does a fantastic job over in Beverly right now, okay? Just go and see what, how vibrant their downtown is. That's what Main Street does, and you want to be in a partnership with them. So, through this, if you can somehow work them into, because I know they presented this to us at our last meeting, and they're not here now to do it, so it's almost as if we're pushing them aside. I don't, I want to embrace them. I want to embrace any organization that can help us on issues like this because of that public-private collaboration. So, that's pretty much my opinion. How's that?
Counselor Butt?
So, I want to thank the folks that worked on this guideline. I think it needs a little bit more tweaking, and I just have a couple of comments to say. One, I think every meeting, I'm reminded more and more of the need for us to really consider an economic and community development manager, because they would be the lead and they would be that partnership that you're talking about, Paul. Nobody denies we need someone who coordinate efforts to have that communication between departments and organizations and us as the town council and the town. So, I think this is a perfect example of someone that would take the lead on that. The other thing for Julie and Peter and Steve to consider is, I'm looking at the application on this, and we are making such a big push to have online applications to help Sherry out for liquor licenses, you know, looking at the ones we approved earlier today. They're so 1970s, and it's so easy to do a Google document. You guys did an email. That's a great step. I'm so, you know, we gave Jen McDonald so much credit today. She's done great work. Those videos are great that she's worked on. I am confident she can come up with an online application, and I'd love to see that back to us in a couple of weeks.
As part of the.
So, I, so I'm just, I'm making that suggestion, because I, we are way past filling out, filling out a form like this. So, I'm looking at Sherry. She, she makes a face, but, you know, maybe the goal by 2020, we will not have any paper or electronic copies will be the norm, because we should always have paperability, but Steve, if we can ask that, add that to Jen's list.
My paper binders, as you know.
I'm not touching your paper binders, but if I want something in the kiosk, you know, it just, it makes sense. You have a flyer. It's a tonic. So, we should just email it and everything, so.
I'm a huge advocate.
Yeah.
I'll say and speak with Jen McDonald on that. I do expect that that will be the standard. As you point out, Mary, and making sure we also have paper for those who may not have access online, certainly, but the default being electronic, I think that's part of what the, what she's trying to do across the board, to try to streamline, you know, all these applications, you to your point, which I think is a very good one. I would also point out too that, given the nature of this, this project, I think including Friends of Lake, Quanta Power, Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association, and Main Streets, at minimum, makes a lot of practical sense, because they both have vested interests, especially where these kiosks land relative to that. And Counselor Dinaco, to your point, I did speak at length with leadership in Main Streets to underscore to them how important a partner they are of this town and the community. And I think that going forward, if we have a bit more vision, which I think we do as a community, they'll be able to peel off different projects and the like that is, that work in tandem to our shared goals. So, I think that there's a lot of opportunity there, and they're just an important part of the equation for that. We recognize that, but I appreciate you underscoring it as well. Any further comments? Counselor Chines?
Just one brief comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excellent job pulling this together, Mr. May, Counselor Smith-Galvin, Mr. Mayo. Appreciate the work that went into it. My only comment would be is, as you look at some of the exclusions and sort of the types of things that wouldn't be acceptable with postings, I think they make sense. I would just ask us not to sort of interpret those too narrowly. So, for example, well, we don't want to use the kiosks for business advertising. I do think it would be appropriate if we have new businesses opening in town to use that as an opportunity to say, you know, welcome to these businesses to Wakefield over the last quarter. Similarly, on political events, we don't want to use it for political advertising, but I do think it would make sense to use that if, you know, CAT is having a candidates forum for town government, town elections, or something like that, that is more civically minded, even though it is technically political, but speaks to sort of getting people engaged with the political process rather than a candidate or a side of an election. I hope we consider uses like that to be appropriate for the kiosks. But again, great work, and thank you for everything that went into it.
All right, so any further discussion on this? All right, otherwise, it would make sense then to table this, to not vote on this this evening then. We'll have a refined plan, and we're looking for public input, so I think that should come in a couple of different forums. One, we'll be sure that this is on the website, so people can get to it, and we'll also be sure, and I know I've been working with Mr. Mayo on this, to have hard copies available, have hard copies available at the library, the senior center, and at town hall, so that anyone who doesn't have access to internet easily is able to also take a look and provide feedback. So, with that, why don't we plan on adding this to the agenda, presuming all goes well, on the 24th, and we'll ask for public input between now and then?
Okay.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Counselor May and Counselor Smith-Galvin, on some really great work on that. Item 13 is matters not anticipated for the agenda. Just a reminder that this category is only for any matters not anticipated prior to the 48-hour public notice requirement, but matters that necessitate our action tonight. Are there any? Counselor Smith-Galvin?
This came to my attention on Friday. So, the Environmental Sustainability Committee received a donation from a business to raffle off, in a free raffle, an item at the Festival by the Lake on Saturday, and I consulted with Mr. Mullen, and it's my understanding that when a committee accepts something, that we should accept it from the town. So, it's a value of $125. It was a compost company, $100 for a six-month subscription and a $25 for a compost bin. So, I would just propose that, if possible, we could vote on that and so that we can make the award.
All right. So, it sounds like the motion then that may be made is for the acceptance of a gift to the Environmental Sustainability Committee in the amount of $125 with the town's thanks?
Yes.
All right. So, I'll entertain a motion to that.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so, move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Smith-Galvin. Any discussion on that? All right, seeing none. The motion before you is the approval of this $125 gift. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 7-0. Motion passes. Thank you for that. Might be one of the first times we use that, matters unanticipated.
Exactly.
Appropriately, yeah. All right, so, next, item number 14 is announcements and acknowledgements. Just a reminder that I.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Counselor Dinaco.
On item number 13, please. I know that I didn't get it, but after having the discussion regarding how much time we need to get onto an agenda prior to having it set, I would like to ask that the WCP be on the agenda for the 27th to bring in what their require, sorry, 22nd, 24th, thank you, on the 24th, so that we can bring in the required information for the council to review.
All right.
For the Festival of Italia.
So added. Perfect. Thank you for that. Okay. Item number 14, announcements and acknowledgements. If anyone has an announcement or acknowledgement, please raise your hand and I'll.
I do.
Vice Chair Santos.
I didn't realize what a, how much work the DPW put into raising the pride flag, because the flag was the wrong size. The flag couldn't be attached. In talking to Rick Stinson, he and Joe Conway seemed to go really above and beyond what a lot of towns would do to make sure that that flag raising occurred when we said it would occur. Several hours were put in, flags were purchased, so I want to give a shout out to the DPW for really supporting, supporting the event and doing what they do best.
And James Ioshua.
And James Ioshua. He was the one, James was raising the flag. Yes, James did a great job in that as well. Thank you all.
Thank you for that. Any other acknowledgements or announcements? Counselor Dinaco.
I'm going to go another step with the DPW. They did a phenomenal job at the Festival by the Lake. Kudos to Joey G and his crew. He's an asset to the DPW right now. Everything went smoothly there in regards to the shutdown, keeping things clean. DPW did a great job down there. The only other thing is that it was on Town Administrators, Tan Forest this week was, on the 22nd, the Savings Bank will be celebrating their 150th anniversary party on the commons from 2 to 8. I know an invitation's been extended to all of us, so if you have time to go down and wish them well, that'd be a great opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Butt?
I just wanted to give everyone an update. The Mass Municipal Association, of which we are a member, had a selectmen's meeting on Saturday that Counselor Chines and I attended. Lots of great discussion. Good to hear that other towns have the same issues we do, so town meeting attendance and money, education funding. And on that end, I just wanted to highlight and thank our delegation. So, the governor signed the bond bill last week, and Wakefield is getting $673,000. So, thanks Senator Lewis, Rep. Roder and Rep. Wong for getting us that money. I think Stephen made that announcement before, but it was signed.
Is that the Chapter 90 bond?
Yes. Yep. So, it was signed by the, signed by the governor last week. So, we will be seeing that money, which is nice.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I was grateful to have the opportunity to attend the Selectmen's Leadership Council.
Conference.
Conference, thank you, with Counselor Butt. You know, a couple of other things that sort of I took away from that discussion. You know, one was, we heard from a number of different municipalities that, you know, talked about having sort of planning forums for their boards of selectmen or select boards or town councils. I know we talked about that last time, and, you know, certainly the feedback that we heard from some of the folks that I spoke to in other towns was really positive about putting that forum together, and so hope we can get something on the calendar soon. I did just want to elaborate on a couple of the other sort of policy items that were discussed. Senator Lewis did actually the keynote address there and did an excellent job, as always, representing our community well. He spoke a lot about the education funding reform initiative that his committee is undertaking. They do expect to report out a bill from that committee in the next month-ish, and he said that he expects that that will get a hearing on the floor, and that Senate President Spilka's interested in seeing that moved forward. The vision would be that that would add somewhere between $1 and $2 billion to Chapter 78 over a five-to-seven-year time period. And so, certainly as one of the recipients of that aid, I, you know, thank Senator Lewis for his efforts there and hope to see some positive movement there. We did also get an update from the MMA on the state budget progress and where things are. It looks like the House, Senate, and Governor's proposals are all basically aligned on local aid, so it seems like that number is set. There is a bit of a difference between the House and Senate versions on the Chapter 70 education funding for fiscal '20. The Senate version's a little bit higher, so thank you, Senator Lewis, and hopefully that number carries the day. And then finally, the MMA talked about some of their advocacy work in some other areas, including making sure that the legislature fully funds the special education circuit breaker this year. So, you know, really. So, you know, really great event and, you know, a great day for those of us who had the opportunity to attend. We did mention earlier, I just want to highlight, the Human Rights Commission's Taste of Pride event is on Wednesday night at seven o'clock at the Civic Center. There is a hockey game that night, but I believe, Counselor Santos, that starts a little bit later, so you could go.
Eight-ish. I'm in DC, actually. I'm out of state.
So not you specifically, but for our friends in the community, you could actually do both. So I believe that tickets are still available and look forward to that event. I think it'll be a great time. And then finally, just wanted to congratulate the Wakefield Interfaith Food Pantry for their annual breakfast last week. Both an inspiring event for those of us who had the chance to go, but also great that they did get a sizable contribution from the Greenwood Church. So thank you to them and congratulations to the Food Pantry, both for a good event and the great work that they do year-round.
Anyone else? Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Just very quickly, happy Father's Day to everyone this Sunday, and the Rotary Club is having a fishing derby, which I have to tell you, I saw the biggest fish I have ever seen in Lake Quanta Power on Sunday, and so I am fascinated to see. So if any fisher, fishermen or women out there, go out to the fishing derby this Sunday.
Thank you. Anyone further?
I actually have.
Mr. Mayo, yes.
Tomorrow at one o'clock at the State House, the Joint Committee on Revenue will hear, well, there's a hearing on our, our town meeting action authorizing the town of Wakefield to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption. So we're getting another step closer about getting this, you know, local option passed through the state legislature. So I will, I intend to go, although I don't know if we'll be able to give any testimony or not, but I intend to be there because I like to be in the room and I don't have to be shy if something comes up. So I do thank our delegation for keeping me informed in that, so thank you.
Anyone else? I think it's great to hear so much talk about our delegation, because that's such an important piece of the puzzle for us, that's the strong relationships that we have with our delegation, what that can yield for us as a town. I did want to just briefly acknowledge the Bricks by the Lake event that was a rededication ceremony that happened earlier this month, and it's, it was a really poignant, heartwarming ceremony, and there were a lot of families that came out. Many people were celebrating the lives that had been lost, and that, and it was a very moving tribute to them, and there was a great essay that was read as a part of it as well. And I would also be remiss in not also acknowledging the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, and this is probably the last major anniversary that many of those in conflict will be able to be recognized. And so thank you for your service to our country, thank you for what you did abroad, and we are forever indebted to you for that. And finally, I would just like to thank the crew of WCAT. Tonight, we have Ryan in the control room, we have Gabby on camera number two, Sean on camera number one, and Tom, who's always our great director, so thank you for that as well. So finally, item fifteen is the adjournment. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So our next meeting will be on Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, at seven PM, and thank you for watching, Wakefield. Good night.